And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear only Father, let me say thank you, Lord God. Thank you for this day that you have made. Lord, we just ask that you continue to guide us, continue to keep us, continue to undergird this city. Lord God, continue to watch over our children, our residents, our police, our fire, and everyone that is here. Lord, we thank you for everything that you're doing in this season. Amen.
I'd like to take a moment of silence. Clerk?
Yes.
Clerk Golick's suggestion for former 4th District Councilman, and I believe the first female ever elected to the Hammond City Council, Janet Moran. Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler. Emerson.
Here.
Rayco.
Here.
Here. Let the record show, eight present, although Councilman Tyler is on Zoom, so I don't know if he responded.
I'm here.
Okay, he's here. Okay, so eight present in chambers, one on Zoom. Item number three, Mayor's address.
Hi, nice to see you all. Thanks. This is my address for the meeting of February 10th, excuse me, March 10th. Action items for the council tonight. We have an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes. This is, as we have all talked about in the previous meeting, and obviously it's coming up for third and final day. It's a reclassification to rezone parts of the Memorial Park area to go from a recreational area to a recreational district, so we can move forward with the Memorial Park development. So I'm looking forward to pushing that along. I appreciate all the help from Councilman Tyler on that issue. It's a multimillion dollar investment into Memorial Park, which is something I'm greatly looking forward to. On another matter, city Hammond, now I was talking to a couple of the councilmen before the meeting began. City Hammond is now the official owner of the Haunted House, the site off of 8094. We recently purchased it for 2.3 million, plus or minus, actually it's a little bit over 2.3 million dollars. We are working with the tenants in the property because we're landowners now, going to work with them to get them the ability to move their stuff out of the building, and then we're going to begin the process of demolition. So I appreciate the help of the council on that issue, and we're looking forward to, just like we did with the River Park Apartments, the former River Park Apartment site, which is now Oxbow Landing. We expect and anticipate similar types of things happening with this development. So I appreciate Councilman Emerson going along this ride with us. It was, it's a great project. I'm looking forward to working on that probably for the next couple of years. But activity log, I didn't come to the last meeting, so I covered some of the stuff that I think Scott covered previously as well. We attended the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Legislative Dinner in Indianapolis. I also had lunch separately with the CEO of the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau at Keith's in Whiting. But that was an annual dinner. We have it, we go every year. South Shore has obviously got a lot of things going right now. I want to make sure Hammond's represented. So one in particular is where the final location of the convention center is going to be. And obviously Hammond has a lot of skin in that game. So met with the owners of Freddie Steakhouse in regards to issues with the Kennedy Avenue reconstruction. I just drove down Kennedy, actually before we got here, I know. Basically 65 to Michigan Avenue is down to two lanes, one lane in each direction. I know that has an effect on Freddie's business, and everybody that's north of 165th is feeling the pain. But I just want to keep in mind that when this is all done, we're going to slow that traffic down a lot and make it a lot more walkable, which is a lot better for development, just like we learned in downtown Hammond. Met with the US, with the Regional Director for US Senator Jim Banks, Leanne Angerman. I know Leanne from the Lake County Election Board. She was the Republican on the board. Leanne's now in a real important spot with the new US Senator. So it's nice that her and I have this relationship and are able to meet with each other, and I appreciate her coming to Hammond City Hall. We were one of her first stops in her new role, so I think that's a good sign. Met with the CEO of Centaur Bank, Chris Campbell, good guy. He does a lot of business with the city Hammond, in the city Hammond, so it's nice to have those relationships. Met with the Lake County Coroner, David Pastrick, to touch base between his staff and the leadership of the Hammond Police Department. We had, we were missing connections between statistics that are important to the residents of Hammond. You know, sometimes the coroner and the police department aren't on the same page, and it's good to get on the same page every once in a while. So I appreciate David Pastrick coming to Hammond City Hall, touching base with the Hammond Police Department. Tried to do the same thing with Lake County Prosecutor, didn't work out so well. They did send, we wanted to meet with Prosecutor Bernie Carter, and instead they sent staffers to meet with us. And this is an important issue also. It's what happens when you have a resisting law enforcement charge against you, and you get into a fight with a police officer and the person's hurt. So they have a criminal charge hanging over their head, and they were hurt in a scuffle with a Hammond police officer, and then they sue us. It's really important that the prosecutor's office is on the same page as the city in situations like that, because if the prosecutor's office doesn't pursue the resisting law enforcement, that could have effect on our taxpayer dollars here in Hammond. So I thought it was an important meeting. Hopefully, next time we try to set it up with prosecutor, he'll actually come himself. So had breakfast with Lake County Councilman Dave Hamm at the wheel. It's always good to be on the same page with the county council and the county councilmen. Signed Public Works Local 142's contract publicly. They're under contract, as is all of our units. They're all under contract for four more years. Presented to the Lakeshore Chamber of Commerce, my annual State of the City. I know that there were six council people there. I appreciate you being there. I don't really care about, for me, I think it's important to show solidarity during the State of the City. So to the six of you that showed up, I appreciate you being there. Attended a meeting between Horseshoe Casino Hammond Executives and the Mayor and City Hall. Issues came up in a previous Mayor's Night Out with people that are frustrated with a lack of action at Horseshoe Casino. Question came up during Mayor's Night Out. I answered it truthfully. And then shortly after that, I was called by the CEO of Horseshoe Casino. The big CEO, Caesar's CEO, came to Hammond, Indiana, met with us. Also met with the Horseshoe Casino Indiana Regional Director, Dan Nita, as well as the local CEO, Bill Gustafson. I think we had a real good meeting, and they wanted to let me know about some of the things that were happening and that they're trying to do to compete with Hard Rock. So unless you have any questions, that's my report for the last two weeks. I apologize about not being at the last meeting. I know Scott was here. I read the minutes, caught up. I know Councilman Barry had a couple of questions about the fence. It was late in the day when I read those. I'm not sure if Scott followed them up or not, but if not, he did, good. So unless anybody has any follow-up questions?
Yes.
Councilman?
Mayor?
Hi.
When you have an update about the horseshoe, would you please let us know?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I could answer questions basically. I was expressing frustration, okay? A lot of us, everybody standing before me has been in the city of Hammond multiple decades, all of you. And you guys have seen what horseshoe used to be, and you see what's been going on lately, and it's a big difference, in my opinion. And I think we all share the same frustration. And it came up at Mayor's Night from a constituent, and I answered truthfully because I'm frustrated, and it got all the way up to the CEO. So they came out here, we had an honest conversation. You know, me, I'm blunt. I feel like we could do better in Hammond. I think this is the best boat still in the state, but it's not performing that way. And they talked about a couple of things that we could do to help them, and I'll have to come to you with a couple of them. Like, for instance, does Horseshoe Casino need to be a boat? Do we really have to have a captain with an engine room and a crew? Because that costs money. I don't think that's important. It's not important to me. I don't know, maybe one of you could think of an idea why they have to have the captain of the Horseshoe Casino right now, because that ship ain't going anywhere. Can't even fit out of the marina, okay? So things like that that we could do to help them as well, okay? And obviously I have to come to you for that kind of stuff, so I promise to keep you in the loop. Thank you. Councilman Mark?
Is that all they offered?
What's that?
As far as changes?
No, they, they hear, you know, I was talking about concerts a lot, talking about, I just don't think that they're being aggressive enough. I talked about the fact that we've never built a hotel there, and I think that they should be thinking like that. I don't, I think that our, you know, one of the frustrating things for them as well is the tolls going up on the Skyway. They're not, the toll goes up to seven bucks, and then people are like, wow, you know, I don't want to pay that toll. Maybe I'll just go down here on 8094. So there's a lot of things that are going on right now. I still think that we have the best boat in Indiana, Councilman Mark, and I'm frustrated. And I felt good that the CEO came here. I did feel good about that. There's a guy, I see him on CNBC, he came to Hammond. He heard about what's going on. They wanted to reiterate to us that we're important to them. And keep in mind, once every four years, the Indiana Gaming Commission comes to the mayors and asks us how things are going. I don't remember the last time we did that letter, but it's probably coming up at the next year or two, you know? And I'm going to be honest, I want a, I want a good performing casino in Hammond. I think that maybe if another company owned it, maybe we'd do better. And if we would do better with another company, maybe it should be explored by Indiana, because we want to do well here in Hammond. I think you feel the same way I do, Councilman. And if it's, the current company doesn't want to make it competitive because they own five boats and it doesn't matter if Hammond's doing well, maybe they should break off. Maybe it should become its own separate casino, so.
I heard scuttlebutt that they're using our boat as the tax write-off because it's doing poorly to balance their fees.
Councilman Mark, I couldn't tell you for sure, yes or no, but I've seen our boat with a lot less action. I'll be honest, though, at the end of 2024, looking at the numbers, the numbers we get, they were down 30%. I thought it was more, to be honest with you. 30% is a lot, though, but I thought it would be more. So actually, I don't know, it seemed like they rallied in '24. I thought it was going to be much worse than it was. But I'm not thrilled with the 30% loss, and I don't think it's done dropping either, Councilman, so.
I agree.
Okay, so, but believe me, I promise you, I didn't beat around the bush, and I promise to keep you all in the loop, okay?
Councilman Rayco, didn't me and you see John Fogerty there once? And now they're bringing Gene Simmons?
Get your tickets.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you all. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the February 24th meeting and place them on file.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Salinas and Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims dated February 19th, 2025, and ending with claims dated March 5th, 2025. Claim number 1883 through claim number 2170, inclusive in the amount of $7,423,596.31. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rayco.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, communications. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I, yes, we received some communication from George Stoya. I'd like that to be placed on file.
Is there any other communications? Is there any other communications? Communications are now closed. What's that?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rayco.
Yes, I wanted to announce the St. Patrick's Day Parade will be this Saturday at 2 o'clock. Be leaving Morton Elementary School to 171st and Kennedy, going down Kennedy North to 165th, then 165th East to Harding School. Most of the council here is also indicated they're going to be attending, and it should be a good, another good parade with, supposed to be good weather, too. Maybe just windy and 60s, so I'll take that.
What time does that line up?
1:00, 1:30. It'll be in the Morton Elementary parking lot.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Hearing non-communications are closed. Item number nine. I'm sorry.
Eight.
Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
On March 3rd, the Capital Improvement Board met, and during that meeting, we had three funding allocations. I'll go through them now. The first allocation that we had, allocation number 232, was in the amount of $45,000. That was part of a $540,000 grant that we received from IDOT regarding safety projects. The specifics of that was a citywide sign installation at various locations that was awarded to First Group Engineering. It deals with the replacement of non-compliant signs per state requirements. The net cost to the city was around 4,500, because that's a 90-10 match, local match. The second funding allocation, number 233, is the purchase of EV charging stations. Again, this was part of a $133,000 federal electrical efficiency grant block that the city received. The total amount for this funding allocation is $144,465. These are new rapid chargers, high voltage, high capacity chargers that will be in two locations, City Hall and Sportsplex. The site work will need to be approved at a later date. This was just for the hardware itself. The third funding allocation was a 2024 CCMG construction project to milestone construction. This deals with Columbia Avenue from summer to 167th. This is part of the Community Crossings Grant. The total for this project was 1.4, I'm sorry, just under $1.5 million. This is part of a 50-50 matching grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to, I don't know, make a comment on that? I don't know, is anybody aware, is there a limit to the number of signs that can be in a certain area? And the reason I ask, and Mayor, you probably have seen this before, on 169th Street there by Jefferson School, as you're going west on the right-hand side, and there's like 40 different signs there. One says a school zone, a couple say no parking. And I had a resident ask me, is that too many signs because there's more signs there than they can read? Does anybody know if there's a limit to the number of signs?
I would think that would be a question for.
Public Works, yeah. Dean?
Button.
There's just a bunch of signs there that I noticed when somebody brought it to my attention, that's all. Anybody else have anything on the committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, April 2nd, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, beginning at 6:30 PM. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, April 1st, at the VFW across the street from Harrison Park on Holman Avenue. That's beginning at 6:00 PM. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, March 20th, 6:00 PM, at the HC3 Community Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, March 11th, 9:30 AM, at Irving School. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch, I've been telling everybody to keep your ears open for this one. They've scheduled their meeting, and they only meet annually, semi-annually, I'm sorry. This will be Thursday, April 10th, beginning at 7:00 PM, at Trinity Church on 173rd and Holman. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, March 13th, 6:30 PM, at Calumet College. And I urge everyone to come out and find out what is happening in your neighborhood, and learn something about how to keep you and your family and your property safe. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to respond to something that my counterpart in the 2nd District brought up in terms of the Capital Improvements Board. And I think we just kind of glanced over the fact that Columbia Avenue is going to get addressed this year. I know that's something, Councilman Warple, that you and I have heard complaints about for decades now. It seems like, even though I've only been on the council for a few years, so just excited to share that. And so for everybody in the room, everybody who's watching, just wanted to acknowledge that. Mayor, thank you to you and Engineering Department for going after the grant to be able to do that work. So I know it's very expensive, so I know that residents would be happy to hear about that. That's one. And then two, just council as a whole will be bringing out ordinance 25-04 for third and final passage. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, you're right, we hear about that stretch of road a lot, so.
I hear about it in my sleep now.
Anybody else have anything on their committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I have heard about that, too, on Columbia from north of 165th.
Anybody else got anything on the committee reports? Anybody else got anything on the committee reports? Hearing non-committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 25-04, sponsored by Councilman Tyler. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as 5911 through 5971 Nobo Avenue, 5919 through 5963 Ray Avenue, and 1339 Island Street.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for third and final passage of ordinance 25-04.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
As we discussed at the last meeting, this is changing some of the zoning so that we can begin first the initial auction for the lots around Memorial Park to establish single-family homes, duplexes, as well as a senior facility building. I see, Mayor, you're here, too, and Mr. Poland, I know I asked you to stay to share a little bit more information about the project, so.
Thanks, Councilman. This is, housing's in high demand in the city. We've been very successful across the city with multiple housing projects. Jacob Square, we've been successful with 19 sites there. Diddalow Parkway, six lots. Diddalow Parkway, Jacob Square is right across from City Hall, right across Calumet Avenue. Diddalow Parkway is right up by the golf course. We did six lots up there. Clark Fields, right in Robertsdale Section of Hammond, 37 lots sold in an auction. Florida Avenue in Hessville, 11 lots, rent and two-story homes people are living in right now. Millennium Manor, this project was going before I took over as mayor, and we've recently rejuvenated. And Millennium Manor has 15 lots over there. So in this proposal, Councilman Barry, there's 28 single-family lots to be developed in your district right over there in Memorial Park, four duplexes as well, as Councilman Barry indicated, one senior home. Much like what we did over there on Soul Street, forgot the, the name escapes you right now, the one right on.
Silver Birch.
Thank you, Silver Birch. Much like Silver Birch. We're working with a local community group, a pastor from the 3rd District. It's a leader, a leader of the community is working with a group of entrepreneurs to put together that proposal. I think all in all, and obviously the council's been instrumental in this as well by earmarking money from the, from the federal government for this project. So we've done our part locally to get this ready. This is just sort of the final step. So thank you, Councilman Barry, for taking the leadership on this.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to share, similar to what Mayor was saying, that this is, I think it's exciting. There's not a lot of new housing opportunities in our city, and definitely not within the 3rd District. So we had a park back there that was not being utilized as much as it used to. I grew up in that park, playing in that park, and just saw it decline over years. And especially with the renovation of MLK Park, I think a lot of people are taking advantage of what that has to offer. And so when this opportunity came to the city, I know that Mayor and his administration were very excited about it. And we had several conversations with the community, had some questions in terms of, I think, the fidelity of how we were going to go after, how we were going to offer these lots and make sure that people weren't priced out of their current homes. We've had those conversations. Mr. Poland, thank you for your work and diligence in making sure that these new lots are very similar to the current lots there. And once again, just excited that we're going to have an opportunity for families to either move into the 3rd or some current families to move out of their current homes into these senior, into the senior building. I know my mother, who's in the audience, has already said that she might be interested in moving there.
All right.
So we'll see how all of this transpires. We're really excited about this development.
We can sign her up right away. I mean, we have the documents here, Councilman. Councilman Barry brought up an important point. I appreciate you bringing it up. There was a lot of concern, as the Councilman indicated, about, Councilman wanted these lots to be affordable. And at the same time, we also wanted this to be consistent with what we're doing across the city as well. So there was some back and forth, as the Councilman indicated, and I think we came up with a real good resolution. I think initially there was supposed to be more lots, and we expanded the lot size and reduced the number of tenants back there. So it's more consistent with what we're doing across the city. But as the Councilman indicated, there's been a lot of work gone on over probably past two or three years on this project. We've already done a lot of the heavy lifting with the financing and with the utilities getting put in there. This is sort of the final step, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rayco.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you all. It's great to work with you.
President Warple, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, thank you. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 25-05, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance amending ordinance number 8242 and amending ordinance 8416 of the city of Hammond as it pertains to the Common Council Scholarship Fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for first and second reading. Refer to the Scholarship Committee, which will meet on Tuesday, March 18th, at 4:30 PM in the council conference room. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion was made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This, this ordinance goes back many years. And we needed to clarify exactly what schools are eligible for the scholarships. And this includes all accredited public, private, parochial, and charter schools within the city limits.
Say it.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Clerk Golick. Item number 11, resolutions. There are none. Item number 12, the intent to consider goes away. Anybody have anything else on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody have anything else on the new and unfinished business? I do. Let me find if I can kick it up here. I received an invitation and a reminder from Police Officer Tom Strababi about the Citizens Police Academy that was established to promote an understanding of the Hammond Police Departments and its policy and procedures. And Citizens Police Academy is an eight-week program between April 15th and June 3rd. Classes are. Classes are held on Tuesday nights from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Hammond Police Department, and I believe the public can attend that, correct? Councilman Spitali, yes?
They do have to sign up.
Yeah, they do have to sign up, and it hand...
The background check, too, I believe.
And he also wanted me to make it, make the other people on the council aware of it. And he specifically said, "Councilman Spitali, you did so good, you might do it again."
Yes, sir. I'm still with my partner next to me.
Oh, I volunteered to go, but I don't know about that background check.
They track win and losses.
Okay, it's all good, then. Okay, anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? By the way, it's the sign-up date by April 7th. Is it, I think, I believe so, yeah, April 7, 2025, and it runs from April 15th through June 3rd. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
What did you say the times was for that?
Pardon me?
What did you say the times were for that?
The time for it?
Mm-hmm.
6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. on Tuesday nights. Is that every week? Yeah.
Yes.
So, it would be every week from April 15th to June 3rd at the Hammond Police Department. Hands-on demonstration from the K-9 SWAT and riot team, police tactics, traffic stops, defensive tactics, crime scene processing, shoot, don't shoot, that word's too big for me, simulation.
All fun topics.
Yeah. Narcotic enforcement and communications.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
One more item worth mentioning, we have the mayor's night out on this Wednesday, March 12th. It's held in the 2nd District, and it's going to be at Hast School, Hammond Academy of Science and Technology. That's from 6:30 to 8:30. So, if anyone has any questions or concerns from the community, please come on out and get your questions answered.
Thank you. Because I'm new to cell phones, right? Please RSVP for that training, too, number 219-852-2917, or the academy coordinator, Lieutenant Aubrey Thomas, at atomis@hammanpolice.com.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to say about the Citizens' Police Academy. I know I attended Councilman Spitali, Councilman Salinas, and it's not only a blast, but you learn so much about what our police officers go through to protect us, from something as simple as approaching a vehicle, how you do it, when they go into a home that's dangerous. And that's one of the things at the crime watch meetings that we talk about all the time, is when you call 911, and the dispatcher asks a lot of questions, and you're thinking, "Just send a police officer, I need help now." The dispatcher needs to paint a picture for the police officer as they approach a situation. And that is for the safety of the police officer and for the safety of those in the surrounding area. So, you will learn an awful lot about being a police officer, attending the Citizens' Police Academy. I, it is highly recommended. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing no more new and unfinished business, new and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression, Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, 800 Block, Merrill. Good morning. I mean, get out, been in a lot of different time zones. You got that started. I'm here to talk about Tapper Street and the major concern we have with, number one, if we have urgency, emergency in the area, fire trucks cannot make it down Tapper Street. It's like two blocks that already have, one side, no parking. I did get a chance with the councilman to send him some of the photographs, I did get a chance to send Janet Vines some of the pictures. I did have a friend from Homeland Security take a look at it this past Sunday. FEMA looked at it. It's a dangerment if we have a high-threat situation in the area. It's just, we get an onslaught of Illinois cars, we get hundreds of cars on a Sunday, and it just needs to be fixed. You know, it needs to be fixed fast. Even our new fire trucks and our new ambulances cannot make it down the street. You know, so that is my concern in regards to that. So, that's why I'm here, to show the emergency level of this. So, the fire department is going to do something Sunday, we're trying to bring a fire truck down that street. Police already tried to get a squad cut down there. It's extremely tight. If you just do the measurements of the street and do simple math, and then you measure the size of a fire truck, you can see it's only a couple inches on each side. So, it's a major concern, because they have to get there fast. It was just an emergency last Sunday in 1100 Block of Merrill, they had to go around the opposite way just to get to who they're looking for to help them. So, I know the church don't want to put a parking lot, but every other single church has been made to put a parking lot. New Hope Church, Mount Zion Church. Over the years, the Hammond City Council has forced them to put parking lots there. St. Mary's, at the time, they had a parish on one side, they had, the nuns lived on the other side. Father John, you know, it was a fire there, and Father John and them, they moved down the street. So, the grassy areas on both sides will accommodate. They have to put a parking lot. They don't get arbitrarily right to encroach on our neighborhood, and the streets are smaller in terms of the cross streets, and the streets are two-way street. So, that is my concern, that you cannot make it there. The same thing I showed FEMA, same thing I showed Hammond Fire Department and Hammond Police Department. I'm going before Border Works on Thursday to push my issue forward. So, I would like the council to put a traffic study there, and also paint the curves like they did over by the park. They painted them yellow, so it's no discussion about whether it's no parking and all of that. If they made the people who play basketball find a place to park, they can also make the church people. Mr. Warple, have a great day. You grin a little bit, just like me, so it's always good to see you, my brother, I love you.
Got in under the buzzer. George Staya. One of these days, Scott, you got to show me how to work this thing.
As earlier noted, I wrote a letter to the council, and it might be deemed premature, but what was really odd was, the same day that the mayor was giving his State of the City, about 1,000 miles away to the east, at Harvard University, there was, I guess, a conference going on about the spread of bird flu, bird flu, and how it's being spread by chickens, it's being spread by other birds, by birds. And the query was, are we on the cusp of another outbreak? We're talking post-COVID now. So, the reason I brought it up was, I know it sounded initially like words in passing from one of the persons in the audience when the mayor opened it up to, at his State of the City, opened it up to questions about whether or not it was time to consider legalizing chickens, backyard chickens. Well, first of all, the Hammond Municipal Code is dead-set against it. We touched on this issue and confronted it six years ago in 2019, and that's one of the attachments I sent with my letter, along with an article from that Harvard conference discussing, scientists discussing the spread of the bird flu. It's no joke in this day and age. So, again, yes, it may be premature, it may be amount to nothing, but I'm leery anymore. Some guy brings up something like that in a meeting, eh, you can take it as a tongue-in-cheek thing. I don't. I just don't see, I didn't find it humorous. I mean, it wasn't to an extent, but only in an ironic way. So, the letter that I wrote today will help you, along with the other letter that I wrote six years ago, with your due diligence, with respect to, if it comes up, a big if, maybe not a big if, maybe a little if. It will help you touch upon things to consider, and because there are things that could make it actionable, and especially with the spread of disease, the way we have, and we've got this guy now at, what was it, Robert Kennedy? Vaccinations are optional. Oh, that's rich. So, to me, the risks are, they clearly outweigh any consideration for something like that. Let me look here real quick. So, anyway, the letters are to refresh your recollection, because, of course, you guys read the one in 2019, right? And I updated it with the one today, and, of course, the article online, and I've got the URL there that you can get it yourself if you doubt, you know, any veracity. Also, one last thing, yes, Columbia needs to be worked on, but right now, it's open. And with Kennedy no longer a thoroughfare, man, we're going to be hard-pressed, we're going to be down the two streets.
Thank you, George. I think that question was asking the relationship to the price of eggs, right? About the chickens at that thing?
Well, did the price of eggs justify reconsideration?
Well, we don't have to worry, because eggs are going to go down to nothing on day one, oh, wait a minute. Yeah. Last speaker, Matt Markham.
Wow. I really don't know how to follow up with that, church people and parking and bird flu, but this is just too nice of a day to spoil it on complaints. You guys hear a lot of complaints all the time, and I know you guys, I've seen you guys do your work, and I know you do your best, and I know a lot of times, your work, it creates rent at home when you're trying to relax, and so, instead of coming up here and pounding on anybody or complaining about who's parking in front of what church in the morning when no one's around, I just want to say thanks. Because I know it's hard to be everything to everybody. It's really hard. It's hard as a father, or as a grandfather, or as a mentor. So, instead of complaining to any of you guys, just want to say thank you to all, and I can admit, Barry, you're looking good tonight, man. You got the beard groomed, you got, the hair looks good. I mean, I didn't even know that was your mom back there, like, wow, she's so young-looking, you got good genes. But, just thank you to everybody. Kirk Golick, Jake behind the scenes, just a thank you. Keep doing what you're doing. Thanks.
You stunned me, Matt. Thought you were going to bring up the burnout car you saw out there in the woods today, but that's a different story. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.